Got the time, Kevin?
All right, I've got 5:45. We will call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand for a moment of silence and then we'll have the pledge. If you'd place a flag, Ms. Thomas, we'd like to introduce a guest for us.
This is John Hook, and he is part of Troop 455, and he's here tonight working on one of his merit badges. And his ultimate goal is working toward Eagle Scout, and we're going to invite him, let him do our pledge allegiance tonight, so.
Thank you very much, John.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Recorder, could you call the roll?
Chairman Lloyd.
Present.
Vice Chair Garrison here. Deborah Thomas.
Present.
Jerry Burnett.
Here.
Michelle Childs.
Here.
And Superintendent Horrell.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Superintendent, would you lead us through our agenda?
I will. First is the opportunity for public comment.
Would anyone from the public like to speak? Hearing none, next item.
Our next item is the reports section. Before we go into the reports, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to introduce a guest that is with us.
Is there any objection? Hearing no. Jackson, go ahead, Dr. Horrell.
And that guest is Nick Averwater with Amro, and he is here to share some recognition that we recently received. And I also want to thank Nick because he was the person that brought this, the possibility of this recognition to my attention, so that we could apply as a district a few years ago, and I'll let you kind of fill in the gaps there, Nick, so thank you.
So my name is Nick Averwater, and I'm on behalf of the National Association of Music Merchants, also known as NAMM, and they're all things music, as well as Amro Music, so we're down on Poplar Avenue, our local music retailer here in Memphis. So each year, NAMM bestows a recognition called the Best Communities for Music Education, which is a tremendous honor for the recipients. In fact, less than 5% of school districts in the United States are recognized as a NAMM Best Communities for Music Education. And for the multiple year in a row now, the Lakeland School System is a recipient, which is truly a recognition of the work that you all are doing and the investment that is being put forth to support music in our communities. This is really an awesome recognition, and there's only a handful of districts here in the state of Tennessee, obviously a state recognized for its music, that receive this recognition. So, you know, the application process is a lot more than just who has music, who's supporting music, who's funding music, what's our student-to-teacher ratio, class accessibility, so they really look at music holistically rather than one class specifically. And so certainly a well-deserved recognition for the Lakeland School System. So I'm excited here to recognize you all, congratulate you all, to thank you all for the support that you're putting forward and recognition in supporting music. So certainly well-deserved. Dr. Horrell, thank you for everything you're doing. Who knows, perhaps when the high school opens, we'll see a songwriting class up there. Do you know anybody that might be up there? But I do have some plaques here from Amro Music for you all. Please feel free to take one back. We can hang them in the, you know, front offices there at the school, perhaps in the auditorium of the new high school when it gets opened up, and for any of your offices. So on behalf of all of us at Amro Music, congratulations. And if I may, just go off script real quick, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm also a Lakeland resident, been here 20 years. My daughter just finished her first year. And leadership isn't easy, and volunteerism isn't easy. Leading here in a pandemic and volunteering is certainly not easy. I suspect it's a lot like being on an HOA. People only want to talk to you when they got something negative to talk about. Just as a Lakeland resident, thank you all for your volunteerism, for your leadership to our school district. I'm a recipient of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Nick, I'll note, board, I'll note that the, all the music teachers, both at the elementary school and the middle school, assist me with the application, so I send them a Google form, and they help fill in the blanks and talk about it. It asks about community events that you've done, and you know, our students do a lot of those things, and they really help with that. And most importantly, they really appreciate getting that recognition. They're always excited, and we have a little thread that goes around when the award comes in. Even though we've gotten it a few times already, they're still like really, really, it's encouraging to them, which we all know for teachers, anything that's encouraging these days is a great thing, so thank you.
Perfect. It's good to see all of you. I'll leave these right here. Like I said, please feel free to help yourself. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Next item, Dr. Horrell.
Uh, next item, we will hand things over to Ms. Childs for the TOLN representative update.
Yes, so as I mentioned last time, the Journal Assembly has concluded. But I wanted to have one more report, because I know you don't want to hear more. So I went to a continuing education on a recap, and then also, I think you all got an email about some of the public acts that are nailed to the law. And so I just wanted to highlight a few of them. And the first thing I wanted to mention is the TISA, which is the funding source a year from now. I just wanted to mention in the training, they spoke a little bit more about the accountability provisions, because these were last-minute amendments that went in. And so schools with a D or an F can go before the State Board of Education, and they expect 70% proficiency for third grade. And then basically, it, when that is not met, then the goal is 15% difference every three years. So then it would be a growth goal on that. I have a few more. One of the new changes is that school board resident, school board candidates must reside in the county for one year prior, but they do note that that could be a little different for city school boards, because like other rules, or other laws, they don't often distinguish what happens when it's not a county, district. And that's, sorry, let me get back, that's Public Chapter 809. The next one is Public Chapter 719. There's a new state law that changes the bidding requirements for insurance providers, that it's not just the lowest bid. They want the word, the bid awarded based on competency and integrity on that. Public Chapter 897 allows for two days of virtual instruction each semester, but only in certain scenarios such as severe weather, serious outbreak, assessments like EOC or ACT. I guess we were all ahead of the game, because now the grading system, uniform grading scale has been changed for Tennessee. It is very similar to what our scale will be. Ours is a 10-point scale until it gets to D. And for us, it's D is 65 to 69, and F is 64 and below. Theirs continues the 10-point scale for D, and then F is 59 or below. Now, of course, just like now, that's only for financial aid purposes, but ours is almost exactly the same now, and those, ours and theirs start in August, that school year that's coming up. Public Chapter 878 no longer allows the denial of driver's license due to poor student academic performance. Public Chapter 707 allows a teacher to withhold a student's cellphone if it's a distraction during the class, during classroom. And lastly, I'll highlight Public Chapter 748, that school districts that, who issue student IDs are required to include the number for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and at least one more other resource on the cards. And that's for grades six through 12 for new IDs. Okay, those are the highlights. Any questions?
Any questions on the TOLN report? Ms. Harrison.
The core academics tied to the driver's license, that's not, that's not the same thing as the attendance? Because I know there's an attendance requirement that is required, like if they provide an attendance for driver's license. So that, those two are separate, is that correct? Are you saying academics? Let me make sure that it's...
Well.
I think it was.
It says, well, it's kind of weird, because the policy says attendance, so I'll have to look. It says, the email has policy states point to attendance, and then it mentions academic performance, so I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
Any other questions on the TOLN report? Mr. Bernard.
I also noticed on PC 809 about the residency for candidacy, that it says that districts should refer to the legal counsel for guidance on that matter. So I'm wondering if we could ask Mr. Plum, will you look into that and give us some recommendations?
Happy to.
That way we could put it, we would just know considering that there is an upcoming election.
Ms. Harrison.
I have one more question about the grading scale. You said our D and F is different, this maintains 10-point scale. Was there any, and Dr. Horrell, this is kind of you too, is there any good, bad? I know it's for financial aid purposes, I assume it's like for seeing a lottery or whatever, money like that. Is there any advantage or disadvantage, or do you need to take a back, further study for us to match the, you know, state grading scale? Because I know ours was different before, which is, which is fine, but I'm just saying for those purposes, is there any reason we should or shouldn't adopt the statewide grading scale or keep what we have?
Yeah, I would definitely need to do some research, really just even comprehend the pros and cons, because it, there's an aspect of it that almost seems arbitrary. I wouldn't want to just follow it, because that's what they came up with, for sure. And it does go, it goes lower, right? I mean, you're, there's more leniency in terms of what's an F, or a D, as I remember.
Correct, it's the D. So the D is, theirs is 60 to 69 instead of 65 to 69, and the F is 59 below instead of 64 and below. So it's that 60 to 64.
So I guess the questions within your, you know, well, of the look would be like, would there maybe effects on promotion or, you know, credit hours, things like that? So I just like to maybe amend that for necessarily be for our next meeting, because I know it might be longer than a week. So maybe target for our July meeting, some of the pros and cons, whether, or even, you know, just kind of whether we should take a look at that.
Yeah, I'd really actually be interested in finding out how they came up with that grading scale. If it's, if there's some research base to that, or if it was to, you know, offer more financial aid opportunities to students, or what.
Any other questions on the TOLN report? Ms. Childs.
I was just gonna say, I think they just started with the uniform 10 points, but I don't know where they came up with, you know, their decision on that.
Yeah, we'll check that out, for sure.
Dr. Horrell, next item.
Uh, next item is the superintendent's report. I did want to share a few things. First of all, this is the June meetings. I want to start by thanking, thanking the board, the teachers, the staff, parents, just for another incredible year of accomplishment, hard work, and learning, despite what wound up being a lot of challenges that have been well documented this year in terms of the second and third waves of the pandemic, and kind of the staffing shortages that that caused sometimes. It made it hard to get subs. I know it was a challenging environment for teachers, and I know that educators in Lakeland and Tennessee, throughout the nation, you know, go into this summer, I think legitimately exhausted and many times frustrated, and maybe discouraged, just to be honest. It's been just kind of a rough go, not only for educators, but for a lot of folks. But what I want to say is, I just really want to give my thanks and appreciation to those professionals that continue to show up and do the hard work, and in, I think, in, well, nearly all cases, I can't think of any exceptions, that, you know, they don't let those things impact what they're doing in the classroom. They show up, and they're there for the kids, and they're there for the athletes, and they're there for the artists and for the academics, and just couldn't thank them enough for what they did. And I do think that, you know, once again, we kind of go into the summer with a sense of optimism and excitement about what can be in this next school year. So it was really, really nice and fun to see all the activities and the parents on campus, and the ceremonies, and kind of the traditions that we had not been able to participate in the last couple of years, even some new traditions. So I really appreciate everybody pulling together to make it a special year for the kids, in spite of all the challenges. I did want to, I think it goes without saying that we, as a board, and I personally certainly, offer our condolences to all those who lost loved ones in Uvalde. It's, it's something that's on everybody's hearts and on everybody's minds, and certainly when these events happen, we all reflect on what we're doing and what we could be doing. But I thought it was appropriate just to share a couple of things that we have done that I do think make us as secure really as we can be at this point, in the, in the wake of the Parkland tragedy in Florida. We did install a secure entrance at LES. There had not been one there prior to that. And a lot of people don't know, I found, that we also did add an armed security officer at LES. So we have a full-time armed security officer at Lakeland Elementary School that works for the school system. I think most people know, we have an armed Shelby County Sheriff's Deputy, Officer Luna, at Lakeland Preparatory School. And this is a new announcement, and even for the board members, because this is fairly late-breaking, we have officially received approval to add a second school resource officer to Lakeland Preparatory School, starting next year. So even though we're only adding one ninth-grade grade level at the preparatory school, they are staffing us for, as they staff high schools. So high schools get school resource officers, and we're going to go ahead and get ours starting next year. So we are, as always, grateful for the cooperation of the Shelby County Sheriff's Department for, for those resources that they provide. And also note, and we're going to just continue to promote this in the school system, we do have an anonymous reporting app called the Stop It App, and that information is on the Lakeland School System website, under the Parents tab, information on how to, how to make a report on the Stop It App, and that's really for anybody to be able to report anonymously, if they're aware of any concerns, or unreasonable, or, I'd say suspicious behavior, certainly bullying, harassment, anything like that, where students, parents need to make the administration aware of something that concerns them. That is a good and very well-utilized way to do that, so just a couple of notes in that regard. Wanted to note, we are, we have not received them yet. We've gotten our raw scores, but we're looking forward to receiving our basically overall TCAP scores later this summer. The date on that is supposed to be July 11th. We do have the grade ranges, and are starting to get an idea of how our students did, but until you know how everybody else did and relative to the rest of the state, sometimes that information's not quite as useful. But we're feeling optimistic about how our kids did based on the information that we do have. So we're busy continuing to look at that. I wanted to note that the Commissioner does a bus tour of summer learning programs, and her bus tour will be making a stop, that's Penny Schwen, the Commissioner, her bus tour will be making a stop at Lakeland Elementary School on Monday, a week from today.
And just to clarify, the Commissioner of Education for the state of Tennessee.
Thank you, yes, that's, very, very well done, yes. The Commissioner of Education, Penny Schwen, will bring her bus tour caravan through Lakeland Elementary on Monday at 11:45. And they'll be visiting the STEM activities at that, at that summer learning camp. Speaking of which, the summer learning camps kicked off today at both schools, at LPS and LES. I got to stop by both, and within the first hour, they were already deep into activities. The teachers were prepared, they had the resources that they needed, and those were all provided by state grants, and able to take advantage of that. So the kids seemed like they were having a good time, and were excited to be back at school, which maybe you wouldn't expect, but it was a great, great vibe at both schools today. Wanted to give a construction update. It is a, it is a sprint to the finish now, and as I've noted, every time you walk into the school or around the school, you can see new things that have been done. They are happening very, very quickly, and obviously with any project like this, and this is a large project, things come up. The timeline is tight, but they believe it is doable, and we expect to, well, not, not expect, we will definitely open the doors to the teachers and the students on the approved, on the approved calendar dates, the academic calendars. I think what could happen is there, and this would not be a surprise certainly at this point, and wouldn't be unprecedented, I think there may be parts of the campus that will still be receiving work. Particularly, there's a back part of the campus, they call it Area F on the construction plans, that based on the priorities that we put on, the construction team, you know, would likely be the last ones to get attention. The areas that look the most complete right now are the classroom wings, and they'll be ready for students. They're giving a high priority, equal priority in fact, to the varsity gymnasium and the auditorium. And then as we get closer, we'll, we'll see that, see where we are. We get a lot of questions about when the, you know, ribbon cutting will be, and when we'll allow the public to walk through. And I would just say, right now, it's highly likely that would be that weekend before school starts, you know, optimistically, maybe the weekend before that, but it's not, not going to be in June. It is not going to be early July either, but we can't wait to show everybody what's happening there at the school. So at that point, are there any questions?
Before I open it up for questions, will you just state for the record what's going on from a recording standpoint, just so we...
Thank you, yeah. I had some technical difficulties on the Lakeland School System YouTube site, which allows us to live, live stream, so we are streaming on a delay. I'm recording it on my phone, and I will post it to that YouTube site as soon as I can, or likely tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Dr. Horrell. Questions for the superintendent? We'll go to Ms. Thomas and Ms. Harrison.
So when will parents get the TCAP results? They're coming in the 11th to the system, and then the parents will get them when school starts? Is that typically?
Yes, that's typically what happens. So we get kind of the, we'll get the, what do you call it, the composite, you know, kind of scores, and then they'll send us the score reports for the individual students after that, yeah.
Okay, and then the summer running camps, how many kids do we have involved in each school? Do you have just a...
I know it's 43 at the middle school, because I asked today when I was there, and I think at the elementary school, it's more than that. I think it may be 65 or so. Don't hold me to that one. The 43 is correct.
Ms. Harrison.
So kind of along the lines of the availability to parents and students, I know we upload the report cards to the SCAR system. Is it possible to long-term look at putting their DM Ready scores or whatever and available in that kind of system as well? Like, I don't know if there's a way to have visual images or anything like that, like long-term where they could access those kinds of records to EOCs, things like that, or state testing?
With the TCAPs, there's a, we could go online, we create an account, and we could go online and look at their historical performance. Parents could go online.
I thought that was the state. I mean, I thought that was the... As the school district, not like their student, but maybe that's the student, I thought.
I think it was the state. You could go online and look at it. Did no one...
I do, yes, but it, but it's a separate portal, right? The portal where you can log on for the...
But I was saying as a way to put the individual students with the report cards, long-term, I'm not saying like we need to do it this, but can we look at it?
I don't know, but I can find out. I'm the guy that, I couldn't get the YouTube stream to work, so I don't know anything.
It just might be really, I mean, I mean, parents go, they have the report cards and stuff, so maybe they could see some other...
I can see the advantage, yeah.
Yeah, so it's in the same kind of place.
Yep.
So with the construction update at LPS, so I know you said along the expected timeline, I know normally teachers are usually in the building before students come back appropriate time. Are we expecting that timeline to be okay? Because I know...
Yeah, the, the teachers will be back for in-service, you know, a week and a half prior to the student returning, and I've been assured that that's not going to be an issue.
So that can set up classrooms.
Yeah, yeah, and, and hopefully even, you know, there'll be some period of time before then, but I don't, I don't know what that time will be. I mean, it was, it was super tight with the middle school. We didn't think it was going to be as tight this time, but there have been rain delays that, you know, technically the contractor gets on their schedule, and they're doing, they are absolutely doing everything they can, and like I said, it'll be a, it'll be a sprint.
So at least classroom setups, they'll be able to be ready to rock the day one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there won't be any issue there, yeah.
And the last question I have, and do we have any updated enrollment, like for the kindergarten camp that was just had, or things like that, registered students, any information?
I can bring that to the, the next meeting, yep. So you want kindergarten camp attendance?
Well, like, or I'm assuming all those children are going to enroll, so kind of like where...
But that's a much smaller percentage of, I mean, if you like it, I can get it, but...
Yeah, I mean, I was just curious as far as where we're expecting our kindergarten numbers. If anything had changed, do we have new students that enrolled in the camp that potentially were registered or part of that call we did before?
I'll get you grade level, yeah, enrollment.
Ms. Childs.
Along with that, and to jump off of Ms. Thomas's question is, my question is not just how many are attending the summer camps, but what percentage of eligible children chose to attend, especially academically eligible?
Any other questions for the superintendent?
One more.
Ms. Thomas.
Can you speak to staffing? How is staffing going for the new positions for the high school, and are we on track there?
Let me pull up the HR update. We are, we are nearly fully staffed, I know, at the, for the high school positions, I know off the top of my head. I think overall, there may be... If this will pull up for me. Looks like we're, there are two general ed positions that are open currently at Lakeland Preparatory School overall. There's an Apex gifted position at LES available.
That was a retirement, right?
Yes, 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 that's Ms. Vaught's retirement, we just celebrated. And then an art and a general ed position at LES, from the instructional position.
That's two positions at LES.
Yeah, art and general ed.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item. Dr. Horrell.
All right, next, as we move past approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, we move into discussion items for this work session. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the business meeting minutes from May 9.
Is there any discussion on this item? Any objection to carrying this item? I would tear a consent agenda. Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on approval of the 2223 school nutrition agreements.
Any discussion on this item? Ms. Harrison.
I just want to bring up one thing. It's not about the nutrition agreement itself, but just as a reminder, I know we've seen help mass communication, but as I understand it, the free lunch program or breakfast program will be discontinued come this fall. So just as a reminder, as we go through this nutrition discussion or the program discussion, that we'll resume charging for lunches, so just a reminder there.
Well, that's for, that was for everybody. You mean the one for everybody, but the free and reduced lunch program, for those who qualify, still.
Correct.
The free program, that where everybody gets lunch for free is discontinued.
Right.
For the last two years, you didn't have to apply, so there was no application. So we actually, we got a bit of a numbers lag in terms of who actually would qualify this time, but yeah, you're both correct. Yeah, the free and reduced programming, yeah, will still be there. So the school nutrition agreements is our annual just affirmation that we will follow the rules of the state and federal meals program.
Any objection to carrying this item? I would tear a consent agenda. Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda for a business meeting. Next item.
Next item is update to policy 4.605 graduation requirements.
Dr. Horrell, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I will. The, the main thing here is that it, under student load, previously, it said that, that students of grades nine through 12 need to be enrolled in subjects that produce a minimum of five units of credit, and we are updating that to six units of credit. It's never actually been in effect, because we haven't had grades nine through 12, but it's just an update that was necessary.
Any discussion on this item?
It's one of those little things that's exciting.
That's right, right, one more step.
Any objection to carrying this item over to our consent agenda? Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda on our business meeting next week. Next item.
Uh, next item is discussion action on the 2223 Protected Reading List.
Dr. Horrell, would you like to speak to this?
I would. This list has basically been updated with the ninth-grade Protected Reading List. So these are the books that the grade levels, just for, for the public, that the grade levels, the teachers typically select as saying, these are books we are going to teach, or at least choose from for our classes, and this means, don't teach those in other classes, don't teach them in other grade levels, and it puts it on the record. So this is our new high school English teachers that put this list together. I have sent some descriptions of the, of those books to the board members, and if you, the board members have any questions over the course of the next week, or want to do your own research beyond that, certainly, you know, anything I can do to help you before the business meeting next week.
I would suggest that we carry this item over to our regular agenda next week to give everybody time to review these books, and then we can... And then we can address it, pump it up in our business meeting on our regular agenda. Any objection to that plan of action? Ms. Harrison?
I don't have an objection, but I just have a question. Should it be Ready Player One and judge that name? Or should it be Ready Player One and then Ready Player One again?
It's just one ready.
Oh, that looks like a typo. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to handle that. Yeah.
So again, Ms. Harrison, any other comments or discussion on this item? We'll carry this item over to our regular agenda to give the board appropriate time to review those books. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the superintendent's surety bond.
Dr. Horall?
Yeah, there, there is a, a state law and our policy says that annually the board will approve the surety bond for the superintendent, which deals with the amount of money that is handled by the superintendent or supervised, I guess overseen by the superintendent. This year, it's a, it's a unusual circumstance in that the amount is actually going down because the amount of money that I'm overseeing is going down dramatically as we pay it to contractors and subcontractors and architects and engineers on the school construction. So we are, the recommended and what we're requesting approval for is to change the surety bond amount from one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars to five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to carrying this item over to our consent agenda? Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on superintendent contract. Chairman Floyd?
Yes, it's that time of the year where we typically take up Dr. Horall's contract. What we've done in the past is an appointment and a, a board member to negotiate the terms of this contract. I would suggest, I won't be here next week. I'll be on vacation. But I would suggest Ms. Harrison's taking that task on as far as chair before. And I would recommend to the board that next week y'all take it up and, and move forward with that plan of action. Typically what happens is Ms. Harrison and Dr. Horall get together and then in our July meeting, they will bring back any suggested, proposed changes or amendments related to the contract. Any further discussion or comments on this?
So there, there may not be any action required for the actual board meeting this month is what I'm understanding.
I think the board needs to authorize Ms. Harrison to.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And, and begin that process. Any further comments or discussion on that? We'll carry that item over to our regular agenda and you can take it out next week. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on charge-offs of cafeteria accounts.
Dr. Horall?
So we did not, Lakeland School System until recently, I think last year, did not have a charge-offs policy. And what we mean when we say charge-offs, this is when students basically don't have the funds to pay for their lunch. But we still want to make sure that students get lunch. And so typically there's a charge-off where the, the cafeteria manager was authorized to basically kind of give a credit. Those things have been adding up for some time and we have a, our, our first kind of official charge-off that we're bringing to the board and essentially asking the board to allow school system funds to cover these charge-offs because we feel they, at this point, cannot be recovered. All of these predate the hundred percent free lunch program. There weren't any charge-offs. There wasn't anybody that, that couldn't pay for a meal because all the meals were free for the last two years. But what we do have is an amount of two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars that we're requesting that the, the, the school board cover. Because despite the efforts of the nutrition staffs at both schools over a number of years, we have not been able to recover those funds from the parents. In many cases, they're former students that, that we may never see again. So what we're doing is asking the board to cover that and then moving forward because we have this charge-off policy. We are taking more aggressive means to collect, monitor and limit the number of charge-offs moving forward.
Any, Ms. Harrison?
Can you speak to, will this come from the nutrition accounts or would this come, which is?
Nutrition.
So this would be part of our nutrition funds?
Yep.
Any further comments? Mr. Burnett?
I know you said this was prior to, is this the, would this be the first charge-off ever? So this is essentially seven years' worth of.
I believe that's true. Yeah.
So it's not.
Because I, because I know, I was told specifically that, that the LPS number is actually higher, but I was told that really doesn't reflect, you know, less effort from them. Some of those are, it's because of the grade where they are now or where they left. And some of them carried it up from LES.
And that's important too. So if it's an LPS associated, it could be a student who accumulated charges while they were at LES.
Correct.
And if possible, I'd just like to know the number of students that might have impacted.
Yes, I will send that to you. Yep.
Any further comments? And Ms. Childs?
So going forward, what exactly, how do we handle if the student continues to not have the funds? They obviously need to eat. I mean, does the counselor try to make sure that they've applied if they're eligible? And for some reason, the parents just didn't apply for free or reduced lunch? Or is there a way, you know, we could get a sponsor? Like, how will we handle it? Because obviously we're not going to let, let a kid go hungry. So how would that work? Because, you know, if they keep trying to collect from someone who's saying, I can't pay, like, what does that look like?
Yes, there, there are, all the things you mentioned are part of it, just making sure that the parents have the resources that they need. There are specific requirements as far as what you can do as an alternate lunch so that it doesn't stigmatize the child. Because as everybody can understand, it's not the child's fault if, you know, there's not money in the account and the parent hasn't given the money and it's, it's time for them to eat. So it's, it's really just trying to increase the amount of communication and responsiveness and also the tracking of it. I think in some cases that prior to having this kind of policy, it would just kind of get, it was just something that happened to be like, oh, you don't have it, I'll just charge it off. But there's more of an accountability.
So what's the, I'm trying, I'm digging for the term in my brain, but there's, there are the kids who automatically qualify. What's that term?
Direct cert?
Yes. And, and, and then there are kids who might qualify, but we, we wouldn't know unless they apply.
Unless they apply. That's correct. Yeah.
So the kids who automatically qualify, they know on day one, they are covered for free and reduced.
Yeah, they'd be in the system automatically. Yeah.
Any other comments or discussion on this item? Any objection to carrying this item over to our consent agenda? Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the update to the two thousand, twenty-two, twenty, two thousand, twenty-three school board calendar.
Dr. Horall?
Yeah, thank you to Ms. Childs for pointing this out or the first to notice, I think. We have agreed to host the, and regardless of whether we were hosting it or not, the, the Delta Fall District meeting actually conflicts with our scheduled school board meeting for September. So there's a proposed modification to the calendar to move that meeting to the following Monday, which would be September nineteenth.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to carrying this item over to our consent agenda? Hearing no objection, we'll carry this item over to our consent agenda. Next item.
Uh, there are no further items on the agenda.
Are there any announcements? Mr. Burnett?
So Dr. Horall and I had some text conversations today. The bricks for the Lakeland Education Foundation fundraiser are set to be delivered to the construction site tomorrow. And then hopefully no broken ones to have to get re-pretted, but very exciting times to see that one more step in that very long, complicated project done.
Could we say it was done brick by brick?
That's right.
Any other comments, announcements? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.